Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Longmont Planning and Zoning Commission, August 27, 2025, meeting. First order of business is roll call.
Vice Chair Poland.
Here.
Commissioner Lang.
Here.
Commissioner Boone.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Saunders.
Here.
Commissioner Earl.
Here.
Commissioner Wang.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item is the land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that Longmont sits on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Yoot, and other indigenous peoples. We honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that the first people had with this land. It is our commitment to face the injustices that happened when the land was taken, and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again, as adopted by the Longmont City Council, July 13, 2021. Next is communications from Planning Development Services, Grant Penland.
Uh, nothing this evening, Chair members of the commission, other than say, uh, thanks all for being here and happy last week of August.
Yay. Next is public invited to be heard. This is a chance for the public where they have five minutes to speak on topics that are not before the commission tonight, or that will be coming before us as quasi judicial matters. There's nobody who signed up, but I'd still invite anybody who would like to speak to come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll go ahead and close out. Public invited to be heard. Next is approval of the minutes. Do we have any motions, questions, changes that need to be noted? Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve.
Oh, gone.
Motion to approve the meeting.
Commissioner Boone, motions to approve. Do we have a second? I will go ahead and I will second. Jane, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Ling.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Poland.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders.
Yes.
Commissioner Earl.
Abstain.
Commissioner Wang. Chair, that passes. Six approvals, one abstention.
Thank you very much. Next is public hearing items. The following are public hearing items. Uh, this one is the Ern Thomas Envision Land Use Amendment, rezonings, concept plan amendment, gravel mining PUD amendments number three and four, and level of service consideration at Ken Pratt Boulevard, South Martin Street, and Ken Pratt Boulevard, Harvest Moon Drive. Kristin Coate, Senior Planner, presenting.
Good evening and thank you Chair Poland and Commissioners. I am Kristin Cody, a Senior Planner in Planning and Development Services. And this evening, for your consideration, I will be presenting the Irwin Thomas applications, which include an Envision Longmont Comprehensive Land Use Amendment, a overall concept plan amendment, two rezoning requests, and a gravel mining PUD amendments, three and four. We'll also review traffic considerations. The property lies east of Harvest Moon Drive, south of Ken Pratt Boulevard, and west of 119th Street. It was annexed in 2017 as the Irwin Thomas Number One Annexation. It is currently zoned planned unit development. The Envision Longmont designations include mixed-use corridor, single-family neighborhood, and mixed neighborhood. As I've previously stated, the request is for six applications tonight. Um, the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which requests to adjust the land use designations in the Irwin Thomas area, a concept plan amendment, which is proposed to update the concept plan to include reclaimed mining areas for development, rezoning number one, which is directly east of Harvest Moon Drive, rezoning number two, which is the eastern portion of this property, gravel mining PUD amendment number three, which requests to remove a portion of the land from the gravel mining PUD and put it into the concept plan, and gravel mining PUD amendment number four, which proposes to remove the easternmost portion of the site from the gravel mining PUD to allow for future development. These applications request a reconfiguration of previously approved plans. My next slides provide some information in reference to each application type. So this is imagery in reference to the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Land Use Plan Amendment. On your left-hand side, you'll see the current land use classifications, and on the right-hand side, you will see the proposed reconfigurations, which includes the, um, mixed-use, mixed neighborhood, and single-family classifications, similar to what is existing in different, um, areas. This slide gives you a depiction of the concept plan. This is the current concept plan in place, with all of this area anticipated for, um, single-family residential, mixed neighborhood in this area, and, um, mixed-use corridor in the top. This is the proposed concept plan change. It's reconfiguring each of these, um, areas to represent the property as it exists today. This is a visual depiction of rezoning number one, which may be a little hard to read, so I will try to guide you through it. So this applies to reclaim lands directly east of Harvest Moon Drive. This is Harvest Moon Drive. It requests to rezone 17.68 acres to MUC, which is mixed-use corridor. That is at the top of your screen, outlined in purple, and asks to rezone 22.13 acres to RMN, which is residential mixed neighborhood, which this aligns with the land use designations proposed in the land use amendments, which were attachments five and six, um, of my staff report. Next, we'll chat about rezoning number two. This applies to the easternmost portion of the property. So this area here is north 119th Street, which is the easternmost boundary of the property. It proposes to rezone 85 acres to RSF, which is residential single-family that is outlined in the red, and the remainder to be rezoned to residential mixed neighborhood, and that is 15.99 acres, also consistent with the land use designation request, um, under consideration this evening. Then we have gravel mining PUD amendment number three. This amendment removes the thatched area from the gravel mining PUD and allows for an updated land use planning to propose current development, and this is removed as the land is mined out and reclaimed. Gravel mining PUD number four does the same thing on the remainder of the site. This is north 119th Street. It proposes to remove the easternmost portion of the property from the existing gravel mining PUD to pose it for potential development. We do have some traffic study considerations to discuss tonight, so what we know and what we don't. The current traffic study shows, um, unsatisfactory loss, which is level of service, at Ken Pratt Boulevard and South Martin by 2030, and at Ken Pratt Boulevard and Harvest Moon Drive, and Ken Pratt Boulevard and Martin Street by 2045. That's what we currently know. What we don't know. So the specific land uses for each portion of this proposal are not set at this point. So what will be included in future traffic studies, if this is approved tonight, would be the entire network of public roads, sidewalks, and connections that will be a part of this Irwin Thomas development. The new roads and connections will potentially redistribute and change traffic patterns over time, and thus changing the final picture over time. So what will these applications do? What will be constructed based on these applications this evening if they are recommended for approval? So ultimately, nothing. No physical construction is authorized at this stage. This is only land use and zoning framework. So what is being requested tonight? Approval of the framework for the future development. So this would establish the basic structure for how the site may develop, and additional detailed refinement will occur later through subdivision and site plan reviews, engineering and traffic studies, stormwater and utility reviews, and other technical approvals. The applicant has requested a condition, uh, that would be as per the concept plan, I believe. The applicant is requesting some density flexibility. So they have requested density as part of the concept plan, and when density or anything is approved as part of a concept plan, you cannot request any kind of administrative modification on it because it is set forth by resolution. In a more standard setting, a project is allowed in some instances to request administrative modification up to 25% of the requirement. So because this concept plan would set forth the density and would remove that ability for the applicant to look towards a 25% amendment administratively, they are requesting that the planning commission consider that approval tonight. What would that look like? So their current mixed-use neighborhood shows approximately 103 dwelling units, so the 25% increase would be 1,004 dwelling units. The single-family neighborhood in the concept plan indicates 174 dwelling units, and the 25% increase would bring that up to 217 dwelling units. Public outreach. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 22, 2025 via Zoom. The notice of application was sent on June 13, 2025. Several comments were received from Left-Hand Water District, Northern Water, CDOT, and Excel Energy, which correspondence was in your packet, and the notice of public hearing was mailed August 13, 2025. Then there were some comments received regarding the site posting. So I will discuss that a bit. Site posting is indicated to us in Section 1502.040.J3 of Longmont Development Code. The requirements include a weatherproof sign posted on the subject property or adjacent right-of-way. Um, one sign required on each abutting improved street frontage. Signs must remain up until the final action and then be removed, and signs must state the notice type and type of application and city contact information. There are also timing requirements. Public hearing notices are required to be posted 14 days before the public hearing, and there's no requirement in code that talks about legibility from moving vehicles, but visibility is addressed. These are some photos that the applicant sent me as part of the required process for posting. So this shows images from the street frontages right-of-way, and is attempting to confirm visibility from the right-of-way. Oops. And this is just a depiction of the sign imagery, so this is the signage that was placed adjacent to the site within the right-of-ways in reference to this meeting. And I will go to my recommendation. Staff recommends considering conditional approval, which is PZ Resolution 2025-7B, with the following potential conditions. There's no condition, um, suggested in reference to the Envision Longmont Land Use Amendment. The concept plan amendment is indicated that support for the 25% administrative modification capability. Rezoning number one, I have requested that the condition be placed on, that that is recorded after the gravel mining is complete and property reclaimed on that portion of the site. For the gravel mining PUD amendment, I have also indicated potential conditions of the land use amendment must be approved, recorded before the ordinance, and the mining and reclamation of the phase must be completed before certification. Rezoning number two requests the condition of approval after the gravel mining is complete and the property is reclaimed, and the gravel mining amendment number four has proposed conditions of the land use amendment being approved and recorded, and the mining and reclamation of that phase must be completed before certification. That concludes my presentation this evening. I am here to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant also has a presentation for you.
Let's move to the applicant, please.
I'm here on behalf of Diamond G Concrete Company to present our applications for your consideration. Also with me this evening is Drew Golden with Diamond G Concrete Company, Brian Williamson, and James Bruntz with TST Inc. Consulting Engineers, and Stephen Simon with SM Rocha LLC. I'm not going to go through the list that Kristin just went through about our applications, but we're here to ask for approval of those applications. This is generally where we are in the world. Again, Highway 119, the whole Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One is outlined in yellow. You can see north 119th Street, Quail Road, and over to Main Street. Again, these applications configure the site for future development, phased development, to provide mixed-use development on this property, so it allows for extension of the city's tax base, jobs, and a mix of housing types in this portion of Longmont. This is a little better aerial of what's going on out there. So the area in yellow is the area of proposed change, and you can see the gravel mining underneath it. So you can see that there are two ponds out there that are lined. There's already a slurry wall around them. The piece of the property next to Harvest Moon Drive is gradually being backfilled, and they're now starting to mine on the cells that are just north of those screening burns between the ponds against north 119th Street. And then the other thing in the neighborhood is Costco, and all those things are happening there. House pad, which is under construction, and Echelon at Harvest Moon, which is also under construction. So lots of activity happening on the west side of Harvest Moon. No changes to what's going on there. This application only concentrates on the area on the east side of Harvest Moon, south of 119, west of 119th Street, and north of those rural residential neighborhood along Quail Road. Quail Road. Existing land use on the property. Regional commercial, mixed neighborhood, single-family neighborhood, and mixed-use corridor. And again, these applications are to reconfigure those existing land uses, not change them. This is a before and after, and Kristen showed you this. So on the left side is the existing. On the right side, you can see the changes. That area that's grayed out is not changing, and some of you may remember that that was part of the Costco application process, and that has an approved preliminary plat. So we're not doing anything to those pieces of property that were included in the preliminary plat for Irwin Thomas. Again, this piece is reconfigured to make it kind of match up with the transportation system across the street. We've made it proposed mixed neighborhood larger and deeper so that it could potentially accommodate an expansion of the house pad model across Harvest Moon Drive. And then there's still single-family to make that transition from the developed ground, the more developed ground, to the open space on the side of east side of north 119th Street and that residential neighborhood to the south. And again, the land use table in the land use amendment has the full range as set forth in the growth framework for the comprehensive plan. It's not the development number that's on the concept plan, but it's the allowed density under the land uses. Again, this is the mix. Regional center won't change, 26 acres. Mixed-use corridor, 17 acres. We looked at that. Mixed neighborhood, 74 acres. And again, part of that is the piece of mixed neighborhood in the neighborhood on the east side of Harvest Moon is under development. So that's not changing as part of these applications, just the piece on the west side. But the total area will be 74 acres once this is finished. And then the proposed single-family, which will be 84 acres. This is the concept plan before and after. So you'll see that Phase One doesn't change. So Phase One existing is on the top. Phase One existing is on the bottom. Phase Two will change to include additional development south of Highway 119 and mining on the remainder of the property. Phase Three will include full development of the area south of the highway and continued mining on the north side of the highway. Phase Three will be, sorry, Phase Four will be full development on the south side of the road and reclamation on the north side of the road. And Phase Five will be full development on the south side of the road and park screenway and open space on the north side of the road. So again, the north side of the highway is not changing, but this is a concept plan amendment, and it was for the entire annexation number one. So all of the parcels are shown. This is a conversation about the density. So the density on the concept plan represents our best guess of how the property will develop based on today. Everyone knows that that's a moving target. We're going to be developing this in phases as the property is mined and reclaimed. And as Kristen said, normally there'd be an opportunity to ask for administrative modification, but a concept plan is very specific and sets the maximum density allowed. And so it's our request to add some flexibility to allow staff to approve additional density. Anything we do will have to meet the standards in place at the time the property is developed. And the actual development will come right through the process. It'll come through the design review process. It'll go through public hearings. So nothing will be built at that additional density until it's reviewed by staff and approved by everybody who needs to look at it as goes through the process. So the condition we would request is that the total density shown for Phase Five on page one of the concept plan may be increased by up to 25% subject to administrative approval. Any such increase shall comply with all applicable city standards in effect at the time of development. Proposals to exceed this 25% allowance would have to go through a full concept plan amendment. Rezonings. This is just a before and after. So on the left is the existing zoning, and it shows this whole piece south of the road in the PUD. On the other side of Harvest Moon, the first phase would be those two places that are 17.68 acres of mixed-use corridor and 22.13 acres of mixed neighborhood. And that's the piece that we made big enough to potentially accommodate the affordable and attainable housing project on the other side of the road. So it had to get deeper to make that work. Rezoning number two takes the remainder of the property out of the PUD. So when rezoning number two starts, rezoning number one is approved, and the rest is PUD. If it's approved this evening, the remainder of the property will be rezoned to 15.99 acres of residential mixed neighborhood and 85 acres of residential single-family. And land use plan says 84 acres. Rezoning says 85 acres. That's because we zoned to the center line of the road, and so the right-of-way for north 119th Street is included in the zoning. Okay, this is about the PUD development plan amendments. And so when the PUD was approved, it was for all of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One and all of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number Two. And it was put in place at the time of annexation so the gravel resource could be recovered. So you can see on this slide, the blue area is where there's nothing changing. So that's all of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number Two north, all of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number Two south, and the portion of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One located north of the highway isn't changing. The area that's in the hatched area south of the road was removed from the PUD when the Costco applications come through the process. And the remaining part of the area south of the road, the south portion of Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One, is what the amendments are about. Again, this is just a before and after. So it shows how the piece will be removed from the PUD while mining is ongoing, and that the piece will continue to be as reclamation is complete. So that's the way it would look. It's about 40 acres adjacent to Harvest Moon Drive, and that's what's going to be ready first. And so we're trying to position that to be able to move forward through the development process as applicants come along. This is amendment number four. So again, this removes the remainder of the PUD south of the road from the highway. So still reclaimed ponds, and everything north of the road stays for mining and reclamation as it's approved on the existing final development plan. So that takes, everything south of the road will no longer be included in the PUD for gravel mining. We believe the applications as presented meet the purpose and intent of the city's stated goals for providing more revenue, jobs, and housing opportunities in Longmont and the specific review criteria as set forth in the Longmont Municipal Code, including section 1502.055, review criteria for all application types, section 1502.060, review standards and procedures for specific major development applications, including 1502.060b3, comprehensive plan amendments, and 1502.060f5, rezoning and concept plan amendments. Specific details of how we meet the criteria are included in the letter to Planning Commission dated April 12, 2025, and we step through each review criterion here to answer questions about that if you have any. We respectfully ask that you approve Irwin Thomas Final Development Plan Amendment Number Three and Irwin Thomas Final Development Plan Amendment Number Four and forward to City Council with a recommendation for approval, Irwin Thomas 2025 envisioned Longmont Land Use Amendment, Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One, Concept Plan Amendment Number Three, Irwin Thomas 2025 rezoning number one, and Irwin Thomas 2025 rezoning number two, all subject to the conditions as set forth in PZR 2025-7P with an additional condition for the concept plan as follows. The total density shown for Phase Five on page one of the concept plan, which is attachment seven in the staff report, may be increased by up to 25% subject to administrative approval. Any such increase shall comply with all applicable city standards in effect at the time of development. Proposals to exceed this 25% allowance shall require a formal amendment to the FDP. We want to thank staff and commission for your time and attention, and really want to commend staff for all of the hard work they put into getting us through the review process and here in front of you this evening. Our team is here to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. As this is a public hearing item, we will go ahead and open this up for public invited to be heard for the public on this issue. We'll begin with the people on the list. We do have one person who signed up. Is this Lawrence Bashir? So once again, you get five minutes, and we ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Okay.
Sorry. My name is Lawrence Bashir. I live at Two Western Sky Circle. I've been to several of these PUD meetings, especially about the Irwin Thomas. And I don't know if you've been to many of them, but if you have, there's always been a contingent here from the folks that live along Quail Road. I think you'll notice today that I don't believe any of those folks are here, and that's because I don't believe they saw any of the signage that was announcing this meeting. My complaint is basically about the signage, that it wasn't put in a place that it could be seen. If you can see from the cursor on the screen that I've got here, right in this area, just north of the Harvest Moon bountiful intersection there, it's a roundabout. They placed one sign over here on the east side of the road toward the development, right? And of course, unfortunately, they used the front and back of the same sign. So the front side was just white, just says there's a urban development going on over here. The backside announced the meeting. Now, if you're driving along on the, you know, correct side of the road, you're going to be looking at the front side of that sign. Why they didn't choose to use two signs, I don't know. I mean, obviously, a sign bracket could have been placed anywhere along there to expose that sign, but instead they chose to screw it to the back of the white sign, and it's not visible. And then, of course, the construction guys placed a road-close sign just to the north of that so that if you're driving out of Costco, coming south on Harvest Moon there, you wouldn't be able to see the backside of the sign until you're right about out the roundabout itself. The other sign was placed out here on Ken Pratt, and unfortunately, a little bit to the east of the intersection of Harvest Moon and Ken Pratt. So Barb Brunk said that she drove by there and was able to see this sign somehow from the left turn lane, which I seriously doubt. If you're actually at the left turn lane up here by the corner, you have to look around behind your car to look back to where the sign was. And again, you see the white side of the sign, not the yellow side. The yellow side of the sign is on the back. And if you're leaving Costco and turning right, going east toward like Mike Walmart out there on the east side of town, you're going to look at the front side of the sign again and not see the backside of the sign while you're accelerating at highway speeds. So I don't believe either of these two signs, you know, were placed in a method in which they could be seen visibly from anyone on the street or anyone driving in a reasonable fashion. A short conversation with Altitude Lodge just a minute ago, I was at an HOA meeting across town where they're talking about legislative updates. These folks said that signage that's supposed to be placed in visible fashion, okay, right? Visible means. And they talked about that mainly for towing and parking restrictions. And doing it on the back of like a street sign or doing on the back of a speed limit sign does not meet the requirements for their visibility, and they said any judge would rule that that's just not allowed. Okay. So I'm a little disappointed that the city and, you know, Kristen Coat here has allowed Barb Brunk once again to place a sign in what I call an inaccessible and invisible area. And somehow, the city always seems to allow them to do this. And even though Barb says, oh, we're going to subscribe to all the building requirements here, this new development, every time that new development goes in, this includes what's now called True North instead of House Pad and the Echelon Apartments there at the corner of South Martin and Quail, okay? Both of those have got variances, obviously, to violate the city code on how much green space is required around them. So both of those are way underneath the amount of green space that's needed. So, you know, even though they say they're going to build something here that's going to meet the requirements of the current city code, I doubt that that will actually happen. So and again, I'm quite surprised that someone from Quail Road isn't here. There was usually one vocal guy every time at one of these meetings. And I'm telling you, he didn't see these signs. So I just saw it a couple of days ago myself, announced it to our neighborhood, who did get out word, you know, and of course, they chose me to come here and talk to you. So but that's my complaint, basically about this signage. And it's not the first time it's happened. Again, once long ago, when this development was under, just starting right over here by the corner of Quail and south 119th, or it's called North 119th down here for some reason, even though it's South Martin, just parallel to it. They placed a sign just off the roadway because the roadway surface was really hard-packed. You couldn't put the sign in the ground very easily. And they stuck it in the field down the embankment, and that was considered also visible at that time, too. And I complained about that the first time that they did this. So it's not the first time they violated the signage rules. And I would love the city to finally stand up and tell the builders that, you know, do better, right? Two sign brackets. Fix this problem, no problem, right? Instead, they chose to use one and screw the yellow sign announcing the meeting to the backside of the first one. Okay? So that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Bashir. I will open it up for anybody else in the audience who would like to come up if they have anything to talk about. Seeing nobody come out, I'll go ahead and close up. Public invited to be heard for this subject. And we'll turn it back to the commission for questions and stuff. But first, first, we have to bring up the fact and rule on whether or not this has been properly, what's the word for it? Posted, mailing and posted. And this is for, I guess we're going to, this is for amendment 19? Which is the certificate of mailing and posting for the application in review? Or is it for all three?
Good evening, members of the commission. Jeremy Terrell, Assistant City Attorney. So what Chair Poland and I discussed briefly before the meeting is that under our land development code, under 1502.20j, there's a statement that if someone challenges the sufficiency of notice for a public hearing, we have to first consider whether or not notice was provided before the commission can proceed. And then in terms of what that sufficiency means, it's a matter of the sufficiency for the notice for tonight's meeting concerning all six applications. So there are standards involved with in terms of notice, in terms of mailing to the applicant or mailing to neighboring property owners and registered neighborhood groups, along with actually physically posting signs. So it'll be the applicant's burden to prove that they satisfy the notice requirements. And if I may suggest, maybe you want to call Ms. Brunk up just to talk about what notice requirement she did, and the commission can then judge the sufficiency.
So before we call Ms. Brunk up, can we have somebody go over what the requirements are per code? I think it was mentioned in the presentation, but if you can go over that again for this.
Certainly, I can touch on that. And the public hearing notice and posting information is attachment 19 to my staff report. So these are considered major applications. There's a requirement to send notice to property owners within 1,000 feet of the boundary of the property. And also post visible signage. Let me go to that. So to post visible signage, it must be weatherproof, posted on the subject property or adjacent right-of-way, one sign required on each abutting improved street frontage clearly visible to residents and passersby. Signs must remain posted until the final action and then removed from the property. And signs must state the notice type and city contact for information. And that is in accordance with 1502.040.j3 of Longmont Development Code.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brunk, would you mind coming up?
Why, Sir Poland, how can I help you?
We need your proof that you have met the requirements for the posting.
There is a signposting affidavit included in your packets that shows that I physically posted the signs, the date that they were posted, and what was included on the signs as required by code.
Okay.
And there is a notice affidavit in the packets that shows who I noticed and the exact notice that went out. And in the neighborhood meeting notice, there's a map of the 1,000-foot notice. So when we started this process, staff determined that it was 1,000 feet of the area that was changing. And so I would say all those guys on Quail Road, they got a mailed notice to this hearing. Somebody usually calls me, but I haven't heard from anybody, so that's unusual. But they were mailed and sent to those land to those landowners. Um, I spoke with Mr. Bashir about his concerns. I went out again and took the photographs of those signs. They are visible from the highway. The deal is there's two applications under review out there. A conveyance plat, which is an administrative process, and that's the white sign, and this public hearing process. So, the signs are posted in visible locations. You can see them from the other side of the street as you're heading the side that faces the highway, as you're heading toward Longmont, you can see that sign. Again, I went out again yesterday morning when the sun was rising, when there was not a lot of traffic on the road to make sure that they were still visible. The sign at the roundabout at Harvest Moon is visible as you enter the roundabout on Harvest Moon. The sign on North 119th Street was vandalized, and so I went out after Mr. Bashir, um, asked about the signs and fixed it and took another photograph, and God bless him, the construction crew on Quail Road pulled the Quail Road sign down when they were building the road. And so, I went out and raised a fuss, and the sign was reposted while I was standing there. So, there is a sign on Quail, there is a sign on North 119th Street, there is a sign on one nineteen, and there is a sign on Harvest Moon Drive, all clearly visible.
And to confirm then, on all these signs, on the front is the announcement for the, uh, you said the administrative meet, and this, on the back is the announcement for this meeting?
Front and back are subject to interpretation. What I will tell you is, one of the signs, side of the sign says conveyance plat under review, and the other side of the sign is notice of the public hearing. Both sides of the sign are visible from different positions in the public right-of-way as required by code.
Okay, thank you. Does any, uh, do you have anything else at this ti- can you please stay up, 'cause there may be questions from the commission?
Happy to be here.
Okay, very good. Does anybody from the commission have any questions for Ms. Brunk? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Ms. Brunk?
Mm-hmm.
Is that part, okay, thank you for, um, standing up and speaking about the signs. Um, can you put that, um, you had it up there, the code up there again on the screen? I, I'm, I'm curious about visibility for the sign and what that means. Um, my concern about visibility, um, approved size, so an approved size of a sign on a collector's street would be different than something on a highway street. So, I'm curious where that approval size, where that si- size of sign is determined. Is that something that the city decides? Because while I may be able to see that there's a sign going by fifty-five miles an hour, I don't, I can't read it, and I'm concerned about citizens trying to stop and see what's on the sign, or the backside, having to get out and go see the other side. That, to me, is not, um, accessible for people.
And I can address that, um, question for you, Commissioner Saunders. Our sign requirements, we do have internal templates, which we send out to the applicant, I believe. The requirement is twenty-four by thirty-six. There is no different signage requirements based on right-of-way as the requirement is that they are visible, meaning that you can see that there is a sign present, but not legible, because at even thirty-five miles an hour, you're going to have a billboard if you want that to be a legible sign. So, the hope is, or the intent is, that individuals will obviously safely park and look at the signage if they have an interest, and then as a sign states, if they have questions, contact, um, me at the city, 'cause my email address and our d- phone number is on those signage. So, that would be where the signage size requirements come from, internal non-codified, um, requirements.
Um, thank you for that. That's interesting that there's only one size fits all requirement for this, so I feel like that is limiting, um, I mean, it's a huge project, and it's on a, a pretty busy thoroughfare, and I agree with, um, Mr. Bashir that I, for a project this size and the changes that are happening, I would've expected more people here and more comments about this. Um, it says it's supposed to be clearly visible to residents and passersby. I don't believe that it is clearly visible to residents and passersby. Um, I find that to be really challenging, um, especially if either side of the sign has different information on it. I feel that is also, um, not in the vein of, you know, sharing this information with the citizens of Longmont, you know? That, I mean, yeah, it's a yellow sign, but if you don't know what these yellow signs are, you're just gonna drive right by it. It's not, it's not even gonna register. I mean, this is a huge project, and I've seen other signs with the, in the city that, they are larger, they're larger billboard-type signs. Um, and so, it's unfortunate that this leans more to, towards, well, I put the sign in, it doesn't matter if anybody can read it, I've, I've done my supposed due diligence, which I disagree with, because I don't see this being visible by passersby.
Mr. Chairman, could I show some photographs?
Please do.
So, in addition to the photographs that were submitted as part of the signposting affidavit, again, once Mr. Bashir raised that concern, I went back out early in the morning on Tuesday morning, maybe, and took photographs. This is on Highway one nineteen. I am slowing down to get into the turn lane onto Harvest Moon. You can see the yellow sign right here. I get a little closer. This is a little closer, so this is the sign on the highway. Again, drive, this, this is my car wi- my car mirror as I'm driving by. The sign is not, you can't read it, but it is definitely visible as required by city code. Again, there's the sign. On the roundabout on Harvest Moon Drive, again, I am approaching the roundabout, the sign is facing me. As I get a little closer, the sign is still there. I get a little closer, the sign is still there. These signs are posted and clearly visible as required by code, and pictures are deceiving, your eye can read that sign from where I am in my car. This is a closer picture of that sign, so this is just as I'm entering the roundabout. This is where the sign was relocated on Quail Road because of the construction. So, this is the lane traveling east out of town on Quail Road. This is the relocated sign. Again, oop, this is just a little closer. So, it's there. As you're driving by, in this lane, you can see the sign. And this is a sign that was vandalized on one hundred nineteenth Street. This is, again, clearly visible from the road as required by code. Thought that might help with the discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is a, I have a question for you, Kristen. Sorry. Um, as far as the requirements for posted notice, does this refer to the white sign, the yellow sign, or both?
The posted notament, notice requirements are similar, um, for both application types. Um, so, I, the posted notice for the conveyance plats, which are administrative approvals, would be visible and meet those requirements, too, in my, in my, um, consideration.
Okay, so, both would be, both need to be visible?
Correct, correct.
Are there requirements that were, uh, speak to the orientation of the sign to the road? 'Cause, uh, this is, the way I'm looking at it is, uh, depends on the direction you're driving, of what you can see. So, if I'm driving in one direction, I only see one sign.
Correct, yeah. You would, well, you would visibly see the signage, although being legible would be questionable from the driving lane?
I mean, that's fair. But we've, we've talked about the size thing, so, you know, I, I think legibility is one thing, but, uh, that's why I'm asking about orientation, because if both signs need to be visible, I would think both should face the street.
Sure, there is not any requirement that I am familiar with that states the or- required orientation of that signage to the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick follow-up from Commissioner Jordan's comment. Hypothetical, if, if there was only one sign had to be up there, either the yellow or the white, it doesn't really matter which one, does it have to be double-sided, or can it be single-sided under the requirements?
Code doesn't state that it has to be, uh, double-sided in reference to the media, the public notice requirements, so I would say no.
Okay. So, the, what I'm hearing is that the code is non- terribly prescript- prescriptive in this, and doesn't require this to be super legible, visible, or some of the complaints. I'm also, I'm looking at attachment eighteen, which, if I'm reading this right, suggests that there was a letter mailed out, too. Everyone was in that thousand feet as well. That was mailed on August twelfth. I assume the requirement is something like two weeks, if that's what we're doing.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days. Okay. No, thank you. That meets the questions I have.
Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair Pollan. I just wanted to clarify, how many signs were put on Highway one nineteen? The one? So, one sign on the highway, and then one near the roundabout, that only if you're exiting Costco, one on Quail, how many on one nineteen street? One, one on each street?
That's a code requirement.
So, follow-up, on the one on, one Highway one nineteen, how would someone find out what's on that sign? To, to planer, um, uh, codes, um, comment about, people can follow up with her about what's on that sign. How would one get to that information? Where would you park to then get out of your car, to go look at the sign and write down the information about that development review?
I can certainly address that, although it's going to be based on how I would handle that situation. I would park my car in the Costco parking lot, and I would walk using the sidewalks available to walk up to the sign to see what it said. Uh, I, I can't speak towards what other people would do, but I would find a place, safe place to park that's dedicated for parking and take a look if I was interested in what that signage said.
Seems reasonable and safe. Thank you for that. But in the last day, I've seen pictures of people driving their cars and taking pictures from the driver's seat of these signs to prove at this meeting how legible they are. That is not safe. And that is not, for me, sufficient notice if you have to drive by in your car, take a picture of it while you're driving to then see what's on that sign.
Commissioner Wang?
Thank you. Um, I have a question about the time span that these signs have to be, um, out there. Like, what is the timeframe? The mailing says fourteen days, but what about the actual signs?
Uh, code does state that they be, must be removed when the action is complete, so the, um, sign for this evening, if this process becomes complete, would be removed tomorrow.
But how far ahead do they have to be?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days also?
Yes.
Okay, so, with the regards on the sign on the quail, if they posted fourteen days ago and it got damaged on day two of that fourteen days, then that's not sitting out there for the whole entire fourteen days. Is there any leeway for, you know, if, if a sign was damaged and it's not there, does that actually count that it's there?
Nothing in code would indicate that it would not count that it was there, as it was posted appropriately in accordance with the requirements. Um...
So, there's no guarantee that it has to be out there for the whole entire fourteen days? If somebody just comes and yanks it away on the second day and it's missing for the whole entire time, then that counts?
I would say that would, had meet the initial requirements, although it would be questionable in the, in the rest of the impact, but nothing in code addresses vandalism or any of those ne- any of crimes of that nature, so I really can't address that this evening.
And I wanna make sure, Barb, um, you put the sign out on fix vandalism last, no, Tuesday, two days ago?
No, I fixed the vandalism sign when Mr. Bashir sent his email to Kristen on the twenty-first, I think.
So, that's like a week?
Yeah, I believe it was last Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, when he raised the concern, I went to look at them, just to make sure they were all okay. I was surprised that the sign was pushed over on North one hundred nineteenth Street, so I got out, unbent the sign, fixed it vertical, and sent Kristen a new picture, and, um, I don't know when the construction crew took down the sign, but they put it up while I was standing there after it had been removed. So, I, when I put it, there's a silt fence out there for the construction, and so I put it outside the silt fence, thinking I was safe. Not so much. The way they're extending the road, they had disturbance outside the silt fence, and that's when they took the sign down. When I got there, it was just tossed aside, it wasn't damaged. So, again, I can't tell you how long, when they took it down, but I do know when they put it back up, because I went and raised a big fuss.
Okay. So, the question is, does that count as being visible if it's on the side of the road on the, on the ground? Thanks.
Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair Pollan. I think this might be my last, um, comment on this, or question, rather. Um, so, each sign for each street is the minimum. That's the minimum standard that you said that you have set, in that you're proving right now. You've done the minimum of what code has complied you to do.
I did what code requires.
Okay.
Post one sign on each street.
Okay, but you could do more. There's no code that says you can't put two signs on one nineteen.
Not to my knowledge.
There's no code that says you can't have signs that have both front and back, the same information on both front and back, but maybe two signs, each different sign. So, you could, if the intent is to put out public notice and sufficient notice for this larger parcel, you could put out more signs.
It's possible.
Commissioner Wang?
Looking at where these signs are, and just by definition, the white sign is to say notify people the development is, uh, there's proposed development there, it's under review. Yellow is to notify of a public hearing for the proposed development. And so if you look at the sign on, let's say, uh, one nineteen, as you're turning out of Costco there, I think you'd be looking at the white side of that thing that's slapped together, and so, unfortunately, all that tells the person is, we're looking at this, but the one that's really the call to action is the yellow sign, 'cause it has a date and a time on it. That, unfortunately, is not what you'd be seeing at the intersection, and you'd only see it if you're going westbound and it's across a busy street and kinda the Amy's point. I mean, I, I don't, I wouldn't park and walk over there. I mean, I, I don't know, that, that seems a little dicey. Um, so, I mean, you'd have to make a left turn, you have to find a place to park, then you gotta walk around, look at the backside of the sign, so it does seem odd that you wouldn't just do the white and the yellow either right next to each other, or one after the other, um, 'cause depending on the direction of travel, w- one direction, you, you know it's under development or review, and the other, you know there's a hearing, and, and it's kinda hard to see, too, if you're flying down one nineteen, so it would've been nice if you'd've had, I, I am not sure if you, or why you guys kinda put it right next to each other, back to back. That seems unfortunate.
Kristen, can you bring back up the requirements again one more time? Thank you very much. As I go through these, first, signs must be weatherproof, city-proof for size, durability and content. I believe we meet that specification. Posted on the subject property or adjacent right-of-way, um, we meet that certification. I'm gonna jump down, signs must remain posted until final action, then removed. For the most part, that has been met. Uh, if the fi- signs were, the signs were up, at some point they were removed some other way, but then they were reposted. I'm gonna say we meet that, or they meet that sort of, that, uh, item. Signs must state the notice type and city contact for information, they meet that. You can argue that they're small type, but it's within the specifications- You can argue that they're small type, but it's within the specifications set by the city code. Uh, public hearing posted fourteen plus days before remaining until hearing, that has been met. The one thing I believe that is in contention is one sign required on each of budding approved street frontage. That's not under, uh, contention. There is one and that meets the requirements per the city. It doesn't exceed, but it does meet. And the last one is, I think, the one that would be where there could be the debate clearly visible to residents and passersby. Now, a lot of talk has been on the one against one nineteen, it's not visible when you're driving, uh, fifty-five miles an hour and going past it. I really doubt there's going to be many signs you could put up that you can really read and understand what was up there. I think the intent for the city in putting these up and the fact that it's on each road, and I think actually, I will say this, the one on Quail might not have been needed because you're actually not built off a quail road.
It counts.
It, but it counts.
We did it because it counts.
Is there, okay, so it was needed. To me, this meets the clearly visible to residents and passerby. It, it, it doesn't state anything about rateability. It's, to me, the intent is to say that, hey, something's going on here. And I've seen before, driving through the city, it's the same sign. I've seen these before. If it piques my interest, I'll either go back, you can call up the city, or in this case, the residents nearby have been noticed, notified by mail. To me, that meets the posting requirements as laid out by LDC fifteen oh two oh four oh J three. It may not exceed, they may not have gone to further steps, but they meet the requirements as stated in our code. Right now, I would have to approve this based off of the code. Looking forward to, if there's any other comments from other commissioners. If not, what we will need is a motion. Oh, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think I was, wanted to say, uh, based on Commissioner Wang, um, what, what you had said. You know, I think that the call to action is kind of the critical piece here. Um, I, I think, I'm kind of on the same mindset as you, Chair, than that, and that I think that you've met the minimum by my standpoint, but I think the code is weak here. Uh, especially if, uh, this is perhaps, uh, I don't know, if a different type of, um, development or whatever would either have the, with the white sign or the yellow sign, but maybe not both. But in this case, there's a lot going on. I think, uh, it, it's always best to over-communicate. So I, I think I'd look more towards the city to make, uh, some changes in terms of what they require by our developers. But, uh, I, I tend to agree. I think this meets, uh, the letter of, uh, the minimum was required.
Thank you. Do we have anything else or would somebody like to make a motion to either say that it meets the requirements or that it does not meet the requirements? Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the risk of being a, a broken record, I agree the code is weak. Agree this is not ideal, but I do think it meets the letter. Um, I would make a motion that we find it does meet the requirements.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Jordan.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Wang.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone? Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner, Chair Paulin? Commissioner Saunders? Commissioner Earl? Commissioner Wang? Chair, that passes six to one.
Thank you very much. Um, that removes the condition, the question on whether or not, uh, the signage was properly posted. Uh, we can go on to further discussions from the commission. If there's anybody with questions, comments about this public, uh, item, let's move forward with the questions. Commissioner Wang.
Okay, um, I guess this question, question is for Kristen. Um, there was a neighborhood meeting on Zoom back in May. I did not see any meeting minutes or comments, um, in our packages from that particular meeting.
And you're correct, there are no meeting minutes because meeting minutes are not, um, completed on a neighborhood meeting. I, and I feel that the, another appropriate way would have been to send you the link to the YouTube, um, meeting in reference to the neighborhood meeting. I can say there were a number of individuals from the Quail Road, a, um, single family that's in, unincorporated Boulder County, who did attend that meeting with questions that evening, but I did not include the link to the YouTube. But the neighborhood meeting is available on the Longmont YouTube channel.
I did watch it. Um, I just have a couple of comments on there. Um, there was a person that called in, a, uh, Mr. Jordan Hill, who wanted to submit some of his comments. Um, he said to email it to you about a particular greenway plan that he and his neighbors have, um, developed and that wanted to be put into, and, what's it called? Yeah, the record for the, um, for, for the particular meeting. Did you ever get that?
I believe he did send some comments in reference to the, um, questions and comments he had raised at the neighborhood meeting. So yes, I believe he did send those.
Okay, and that was, that was entered into the official record for this particular project and that will be sent along to the developers?
Correct, they have seen those comments and are aware of them.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to explore the traffic study a little bit. And so I do have a question for the developer on it, but I want to start with, um, um, Kristen, if you don't mind. I, I would just, I want to understand, given the comment that this is a preliminary study, and there's going to be future ones, kind of what, what those different touchpoints are, what's required, what actually gets looked at and approved throughout the process?
Sure, and our transportation planner is probably much better versed in addressing those questions. And I believe she is here, so I can speak to it very basically and indicate that any development will require plating and subdivision, um, and site plan review. So in the course of those reviews, traff, traffic studies are required, which would take into account infrastructure and right of ways being put into place to accommodate those developments. But I believe, let me, I believe Josh Sherman is coming down to address those in greater detail. You're welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Josh Sherman, civil engineer with Public Works. So the question was, what would you expect in a future study versus what we've received to date?
Basically, yes, because the, the study today is not, I mean, it is based on the concept plan. It's not based on the specific densities and we know there's the request for the twenty-five percent. We also know there's no comments from CDOT, um, because they said they wouldn't review it this time, if, paraphrasing, obviously. But just, you know, what other chances does the city have to look at this and say, do we need different infrastructure in place? Do, do, do other changes to the, I guess, existing infrastructure need to take place in order to accommodate this demand? And do we have the ability to hold the developer to that, should those, should that arise in the future?
The, the short answer is yes. So each development application moving forward after, um, after the concept plan would require a traffic studies as a part of that complete application. That study is gonna take a further look at what is the exact development that's being proposed, that's in line with the concept plan. As they mentioned, it may not, you know, right, this development may not occur all at once. So it may focus only on an aspect of the development at that time.
Okay, no, that's helpful. And, and I also want to make sure I'm just understanding this correctly. This may be an applicant question, so feel free to defer if you don't, if you want to. But it sure looks like the level of services falling below, you know, down to DEF happens regardless of this project, just in the assumed background demand. Is that more or less fair at least?
Yes, I, I have read the traffic study and would agree, right, that they evaluate several conditions, the existing condition, the future conditions without the project, the future conditions with the project. Right, the long and the short of it is the background traffic on one nineteen is heavy. And that at certain intersections, um, without the project, specifically at one hundred nineteenth Street and one nineteen, right, trying to make that movement onto one hundred, one nineteen or across one nineteen from one hundred nineteenth Street is very challenging at peak hours. Yep.
And I guess, so one last question for you, and I appreciate you being willing to entertain this a little bit.
Sure.
What control does the city have over the CDOT right of way on one, on, on Highway one nineteen, not one nineteenth Street? But so i- if you need to make improvements to Ken Pratt one hundred and nine, State Highway one nineteen, what does the city control? What does CDOT control?
The answer is we're co-permitting authorities. So the city of Longmont has permitting authority, so for an access permit or for a right-of-way, work and right-of-way permit on State Highway one nineteen through, through the city, based on an agreement that we have with CDOT. It's very common that we're going to coordinate with them on that permit, just like you saw here, where they would be a referral agency. We would ask them for a review on those plans or on that study for concurrence. But, um, we're, the way I think about it is we're co-permitting authority. This, CDOT can also come in and do a project on their own, which you've may have seen on North Main Street, where they may come in and put a center median, um, based on their own needs or what, what their funding allows. But.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Sure.
And one question for the applicant then on this. I am looking specifically in the traffic study. Sorry, this is page twenty-four, table five, and I'm not asking you to quote numbers.
I'm going to ask the traffic engineer to answer that question because I know just enough to be dangerous.
Nope, absolutely.
I'll get out of the way.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Simon. I'm traffic consultant on this project with SM Rucha. Question was page twenty-four?
Twenty-four, table five. It's, it's the trip generation summary.
Okay.
And I'm not going specific numbers with you.
Just a moment.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what, um, what specific information are you looking for?
So, so the question I have, the way I read the broader applicant, the broader application is we're largely densifying. Um, the mixed neighborhood gets larger, the single-family neighborhood gets smaller, and yet the entire trips generated actually goes down. And I don't understand why.
Sure.
Trips generated goes down when density goes up.
Sure, so to give a little bit of clarification on that, and we mention it as part of, um, the text of the document, I believe. I'd have to go looking for it, but the purpose of this trip generation summary is to provide commission an idea of how the current changes relate to what is already in place. And same with the current plan, where it's a best guess with, um, what's being proposed as a best guess with the current plan that's in place, with the current zoning, it's also a best guess. So with that said, what we're trying to do is we're, we're giving an assumption as far as here's what the current densities allow based on acreage. And we just do a quick calculation and say, if it's based on this number of units per the acres, and we assume all the acreage is built out, here's what the density is. So that's where those numbers come from. And it's just to kind of give that initial comparison, but I would say, take it with that understanding that these are best guesses based on what we know is currently zoned for and could be built and versus what is being proposed, um, as well. And so, yes, overall, you're seeing a increase as far as what they're proposing. But based on how the rearrangement works and what the applicant currently is proposing as far as what could actually be built, their best guess, these are the numbers that we're coming up with.
And these are based on kind of that, well, what, what's in the plan is the density for each of those units.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Wang.
In that same traffic study on page twenty-one, it talks about the assumptions for year twenty forty-five, um, saying the level of service would be a, a level E on South Martin and Ken Pratt Boulevard by that time. And then there's a sentence that says, as such, construction of dual left turn lanes for the eastbound and westbound left-turning movements is a potential solution which will allow for overall LOSD operations during the afternoon peak hour. Who pays for that? I mean, I don't know, would that be something, and, and kind of the Harrison's, I mean, you got a kind of a co-thing between the city and the, and the, you know, the state. So I, I don't know, just kind of curious.
I have a little information that might help with this part of this discussion. Just have to find it. I brought the, what if they ask question list and there's a slide back in here, this one. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in that intersection, those lanes are there, they're just striped out. So they could be added with striping changes as opposed to construction changes. Does that help? Okay, so, and, and, and if it's our cause, I think you have to ask Josh, but I think it's our dime, correct? I'm going to let the city answer that question, but typically, development plays its own way, its city policy. Unless it's a fair share pro-rata thing about what's there and what we pay a part of. Is that the answer? I just put words in Josh's mouth. That is the answer.
Uh, good evening again. So just to reiterate, and I'll even pull it back to the annexation agreement, which, with the original concept plan, right, is a part of the annexation. The annexation agreement more or less speaks to the same thing that the applicant said, and development pays for development. So that's also a part of the agreement that runs with this land and, um, this property.
Okay, Commissioner Wang.
Thank you. Um, speaking of development pays for its own way, um, how stable would be reclaimed land on the gravel lines? If subsidence or settling happens in twenty or thirty years and it damages buried infrastructure, who's going to be responsible for fixing that?
However, any development that's built on reclaimed property has to pass through a geotechnical analysis to prove up that it's stable. So, um, city won't let us build on ground that isn't compacted sufficiently to support the infrastructure. And this gravel is about twelve to twenty feet deep, so there's not a lot of fill there. It's not like a, like a mining subsidence or something like that. So the ground will go up in lifts and be compacted to be able to support the infrastructure as part of the reclamation. And if, if you'll remember on Costco, they didn't like the compaction even of the native ground, so they over-excavated it and put it back and re-compacted it. So that's part of the geotechnical analysis as we get further along in the development process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I had a, Kristen, this is for you. It was about the twenty-five percent, uh, density piece. Was this, is this being requested to be added in because once we do a concept plan, we're locked in at a particular number of units?
That is correct, Commissioner Jordan. Once a concept plan is approved, that is the maximum density that can be considered on that property, unless the, um, applicant or the property owner would come back before you to request a concept plan amendment. So that is an option which requires, um, obviously, staff review and a public hearing.
So why would we not just say, um, increase the number of units rather than have, uh, this potential for twenty-five percent?
That would probably be better addressed by the applicant's consultant as that is where the request come from, comes from. But it was basically, um, put forth to staff as just to allow for that flexibility of a standard, um, site development application.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to ask the applicant, why not just say, hey, we want to put this number in instead of, hey, this number, but twenty-five percent?
This goes back to the traffic study. Staff asked us to match up the concept plan with the traffic study as presented, so the numbers match up. And so those numbers that they did the analysis on are the best estimate of the numbers that are reflected on the plan. So when we talked with staff about it, our request was that could it be considered as some future traffic study that was additional density? How would we handle that? And the way that would be handled would be through some kind of a review process. We're just trying not to come back and do another concept plan amendment. You'll remember over on the, uh, west side of town, they wanted two more units and they had to come back through the whole process to amend the concept plan. So we're just trying to build a little flexibility in while still, um, honoring the traffic study as it was presented.
Okay.
So, and again, that's why it says it has to meet the standards going forward. So at the time, any more density would be added, there'd be a new traffic study to reflect the improvements required at that time.
And, uh, I don't know, this might be for you, Grant, uh, but I mean, it's. And uh, I don't know, this might be for you, Grant, uh, but I mean, as far as the typical variance for what, uh, you know, staff can approve. Uh, you know, in, in other kind of scenarios, I know we talked about square footage on an ADU recently, is twenty-five percent in keeping with kind of what's under your purview or is that higher than typical?
Commissioner, um, through the chair, twenty-five percent is typical for things like administrative modifications. So I would say it's commensurate with other portions of the code that do have a quantifiable standard. Um, there of course are other, I'll say uh, quantifiable, quantifiable standards that do deviate from that, but I would say it's not uncommon throughout the code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wang.
Another question. Um, there's a mention in the concept plan of a forty-foot irrigation corridor and landscaping buffer along the southern um, boundary of the property. Once the concepts plan is approved, is, is that forty feet baked in as in you can't change it anymore or will that be adjusted later on?
We assume it's required as part of the concept plan and that would be the minimum as required moving forward. And that was in direct response to those. People on Quail Road who wanted to make sure there was a pedestrian corridor along their back property line.
Okay.
So, yeah, so when it comes through the process, that's the baseline for that corridor.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Kristen, um, when I look at uh, I think it's item number six, which is the application includes appropriate transportation plan, et cetera, et cetera. It says at this stage only preliminary transportation information has been submitted. The materials reviewed so far show the development of the site is feasible. My question is, in regards with this commission, what's the process after this? Do we get another swing at this when we get a more detailed traffic study? How does this work to make sure that things are a little nebulous?
Sure, that's a great question. So going forward, the um, property will be required to be platted. So preliminary plats are required to go before the planning commission for a um, decision. And you are the decision-making body on preliminary plats. So transportation study or traffic studies would be required as the parts of those applications. Which would then be forwarded to you as an attachment on any um, staff reports in reference to site plans. Those are generally um, all administratively approved, but dependent upon the uses because we don't really have the uses completely dialed in at this point. There could definitely be conditional uses, which would come before the planning commission for consideration as per code requirements. So over the course of the development of this acreage, there, it, this property will become before the planning commission in additional times.
At the preliminary plat, is that where we may see additional information about road modifications that would need to be made to meet standards?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I do have another question. I don't know if this is for Ms. Brunk or Kristen. Where are we at in the single-family and the mixed-use neighborhood densities compared to what max densities are?
I believe RSF is one to eight units per acre. Let me look at the RMN because I do not recall that off the top of my head. So RMN requires between six to eighteen dwelling units per acre.
Okay, and do we know where we are with the proposed, and I'm going to ask with the additional twenty-five percent?
I will um, let our consultant take that question.
I can see calculators coming out.
Minimum.
Just if I can get some, some quick numbers, just so I can feel good about the numbers.
It went to two, from one forty-seven to two oh nine was a twenty-five percent. Hold on a second here. In Kristen's presentation, she calculated the difference. I just have to find it. Up, here. So in the mixed neighborhood, in the total acreage, it's eight oh three units up to one thousand four units with the twenty-five percent increase.
Okay.
And the maximum density on that acreage would be, Brian has his calculator out? Well, it's on both sides of the road probably. So it's a total mixed neighborhood on the property. You'll remember also that house pad lowered the density, you know, because that was originally multifamily. And then when they came through the process, the number went down. Echelon got a affordable housing bonus, so theirs bumped a little bit. Those kind of things. Thirteen thirty-two. Maximum allowed.
Maximum.
So instead of a thousand four, it would be thirteen hundred and thirty-two in the mixed neighborhood.
Okay.
And then in the single-family neighborhood, single-family neighborhoods, um, a hundred and seventy-four would be allowed by zoning. The twenty-five percent increase would be two hundred and seventeen. A big portion of that single-family neighborhood includes the ponds and some floodway. So it won't, the whole neighborhood won't develop at that density. Does that, does that make sense? And the traffic some, uh, study made that assumption. So the eighty-four acres would be six hundred and seventy-two for the maximum. And two hundred and seventeen is what the plus twenty-five percent allows for.
Okay.
We kind of went for the middle as we were looking at the land use.
So if you go and add another two hundred and change. Your number of units is going to be about eight hundred in an eighty-four acreage parcel. Which is above the eight to use per acre.
It's only going to be two, two hundred, two, twenty-five plus is two hundred and seventeen units on the eighty-four acre parcel.
Right, but that's along with, is that with the six hundred and seventy-two is the high?
The high, that would be allowed, but we're only asking for with the twenty-five percent, two hundred and seventeen.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is that, is that the question?
Yes. So the high is the maximum to use, but you're below the maximum to use?
Yes, we are below, significantly below the maximum to use in the single family.
That's what I needed clarification on. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Earl.
I want to follow up on that and keep doing math. I'm sorry. If I'm understanding what was just said correctly, I get we're talking the two seventeen is the max you're asking for with the twenty-five percent. It's on an eighty-four acre parcel, so it's two point six-ish dwellings per acre. But that includes a whole bunch of space that's never going to be developed because of the ponds. Is that correct?
Right, so the net, but that's the net density on that ground.
And, and for the code, that's how we calculate that.
And so there could be smaller, I mean.
Uh, yes.
Hopefully as we go forward in the world, single-family detached homes may be on smaller lots.
I, I, I'm, yeah, understood.
Okay.
The, I guess I'm a, the, the ponds were a little confusing to me in the packet. Because I see them on some of the maps and not some of them, and I'm guessing it's where it's required and where it's not. But those exist in perpetuity, if I'm understanding what's being said correctly.
Yes.
Okay, they can, I guess, okay.
Nothing is forever, but current approval for the, for the reclaimed gravel mine and the PUD require that there, those ponds are there. And the plan is to use those ponds for water storage and drainage as, as a property develops. Again, more information has to go through the staff process to make sure that works. And the floodway is the floodway.
Yep.
It is what it is. You can't build there. And the floodplain, if we want to build in the floodplain, needs to be modified through a process at the city, if there's any density there, so. It is a moving target and it is a concept plan.
Understood.
Yeah.
But I mean, so theoretically, because to the point, nothing's in perpetuity. That could be changed, but that requires a new concept plan, a floodway amendment, and a whole bunch of hearings to go along with that process.
We'll be right back here talking to you about it.
Okay, I would, it, it's helpful to understand the context of that because it, it is a little unclear in how it was presented for that part specifically. Uh, because the dwelling units look, the single-family looks really low without incorporating those ponds.
If you don't look at the floodway and the ponds.
Understood, yeah. No, thank you.
I mean, the cool thing is it'll be wonderful open space for this neighborhood. Think of the trail system.
Which we'll see, which we'll see in a preliminary plat.
This is a landscape architect speaking.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have any comments? Do we have any motions? Commissioner Earl.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, one clarifying comment, and this is probably for our staff. We have the three resolutions in front of us, PZR twenty twenty-five seven A, B, and C. B is what's recommended from staff, given the, the conditions that staff laid out, including things like the rezoning approved after gravel mining is complete. And several more, I'm not going to read them in verbi- out. Does this seven B as written include the twenty-five percent that the applicant has requested? So that would need to be included in the motion if we were to decide to adopt that. Is the wording for that somewhere specifically? In, in this packet already? And if someone has it handy, I'll turn off my microphone, stop talking, but I'm, I'm inclined to make a motion for seven B as presented.
Planning zoning communications, so that is the first one, I believe. Actually, I H one, under general information, I believe the second paragraph has what you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, there we go. No, that's exactly what, so, all right. I managed to break that switch. Okay, cool. Deal with that later. I'm going to try to read this off the side here. Literally, plastic popped off. All right. Thank you everyone for your indulgence. I'd like to move that we uh, adopt PZR twenty twenty-five seven B as written with adding um, the following condition for annexation one, concept plan amendment number three. That is, quote, "The total density shown for phase five on page one of the concept plan, attachment seven, may be increased by up to twenty-five percent, subject to administrative approval. Any such increase shall comply with all applicable city standards in effect at the time of development. Proposals to exceed this twenty-five percent allowance shall require a formal amendment to the concept plan."
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Jordan.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are there any further comments? If not, oh, Commissioner Boone.
Just to be clear, there are six things being asked for tonight. Are we voting on them individually or as a group? All as one.
Jeremy?
Yes, that's correct. Be all of them approved at, with conditions as noted in PZR B. So the rezoning number one has a condition, the PUD amendment number three has two conditions, rezoning number two has one condition. PUD amendment four has two conditions, and then Commissioner Earl's motion adds a condition to the concept plan amendment. So the only one that would not have a condition is the um, amendment to envision Longmont as reflected in the PZR.
Thank you. In that case, I will second the motion.
It was already seconded.
Oh, it was already seconded. Never mind. I will third the motion.
Okay, are there any further comments? If not, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Commissioner Wang.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Vice Turpulon.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders. Commissioner Earl. Commissioner Wang. Chair, that passes six to one.
Thank you. This item will now be forwarded to the Longmont City Council for action. If you are unfamiliar with council procedures and intend to appear before city council, please contact the planning division for further information at three oh three, six five one, eight three three zero. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. Thank you to the applicant. Uh, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, this is not public hearing items. Uh, other business, the first item is the Southeast Urban Renewal Plan, First Amendment, Laura Moody, redevelopment and revitalization director presenting.
Harrison, they're only like two hundred dollars apiece, so it's fine.
You know that?
Yeah, thank you. I'll gladly have that documented.
Oh. Turn on, oh, there you go, I think.
Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Moody, um, executive director of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. Tonight, I will be presenting two amendments for your review to two existing urban renewal plan areas. To refresh your memories, Longmont has two urban renewal plan areas. The first is the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan area. That is the top image. Um, and the plan area boundaries are in red. This plan area was adopted on December twelfth, two thousand and six. The second plan area is the Twin Peaks Mall area, urban renewal plan area. Um, the second image was adopted on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine. And it was amended with the TIF district um, in the blue outline on October twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. So the first of these amendments that I'm bringing to you today is the Second Avenue and Martin Street proposed amendment. You can see it's in the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan area, and the zoomed-in image is the area of the amendment. So it is at, right at Second and Martin and goes up to Third, down to the railroad. Um, so it's that entire area. The development project that is under construction at Second and Martin is a two-hundred-unit multifamily residential per, uh, project. This, as I mentioned, the site plan has been approved and is under construction, and they do hope to have occupancy in the first quarter of next year. Just some information about the location, the existing use, as I said, that it is um, under construction. The existing use is multifamily housing, and it's a mixed-use corridor zoning and mixed-use employment zoning. And then surrounding uses vary from mixed-use corridor, residential mixed neighborhood, unincorporated Boulder County, mixed-use corridor, mixed-use employment, mixed-use downtown, and mixed-use employment. So how does this amendment match with envisioned Longmont? The properties in this amendment exist within areas of change for the city. Growth would be desirable and beneficial in this area. Land in these, these properties uh, present a balanced mix of residential, employment, retail, commercial, recreational, and other uses. That allow residents to live, work, play, learn, and conduct much of their daily business within the city. Redevelopment of these specific properties will meet the needs of Longmont residents and businesses and people who work in Longmont by providing housing to Longmont residents. And the redevelopment incorporates a higher-density housing type. So the application summary is that this is the First Amendment to the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan area. And in this amendment, we're uh, working to create a tax increment district number one. And in this amendment, we're working to create a tax increment district number one. What we're planning to do is eradicate blight through tax increment financing, all determined by the Colorado Urban Renewal Law. And our question for the commission is to determine if this tax increment district follows envisioned Longmont's comprehensive plan. So our recommendation is to approve the First Amendment to the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan to be in conformance with envisioned Longmont's multimodal and comprehensive plan. So what I'd like to do is pause here and discuss this before we move on to the Second Amendment.
It sounds good.
Okay.
Is there anything further you'd like to say, or?
That is all I have prepared.
Okay, then it's time to open up for questions to the commission. Comments, questions? Yep. Commissioner Wang.
Thanks. I just want to get some clarification. We're being asked to change or do approve the amendment to add the tax increment to district, right?
Correct.
How does Tabor factor into this? Once it's developed or established, the district is established, would the owners within the district have to vote themselves to increase the taxes? Like, how does Tabor work with that?
So it's not a tax increase. The way tax increment financing works is it's not a new tax. How tax, and it occurred to me, I should have had a diagram of how tax increment financing works, is tax increment is based on two pieces. You have the base value and then the increment of the improvements. So what happens is you, with additional redevelopment, you have that increase in total property value, which is then separated into base and increment. And what you're talking about is that increase in property value. So you're not talking about a increase is a, it's not a new tax. It's an increase in the total amount of tax pulled from that increase in property value.
Okay, and the additional tax revenue can only be spent within the district. Is that correct?
Correct. So the tax increment financing, the tax increment generated within the plan area can only be used to eradicate blight within that plan area.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further questions? Commissioner Lang. So that particular area is primarily residential, correct? Yeah.
Are you looking at, that is the actual property, and then that is the map of the area?
Okay.
No, the the residential is, it is, the property prior to being redeveloped was, and Grant can speak to this, the history of the property.
It's a funky property, right? I mean.
I think it was storage.
That's what I was saying. Thank you, yes.
Mettle reclamation. Thank you.
Someone remembers better than I do. Then how, on the TIF, how does that tax get collected? I would think it'd be more from like, commercial entities than people living in apartments.
Because multifamily housing is taxed at, or mixed-use housing is taxed at a commercial rate.
Okay. So that, you're taxing the owner of the mixed-use housing? Is that how that's working?
Correct.
Okay. Residents are unaffected, obviously. They're just living there.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? If not, is somebody willing to go ahead and make a motion? Commissioner Saunders.
Thank you, Chair Pollan. Can you pull the amendment up onto the screen so I can read it? Thought we had it. Thank you so much. I approve, I approve. I move that we approve the First Amendment to the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan to be in conformance with the envisioned Longmont multimodal and comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Wang.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further comments? Any for further questions? Yes.
I do have a comment. I wanted to mention that it was helpful to have Tony Chacon come in, was it a month or two ago, and explain a lot of TIF to us.
Okay.
So that laid a lot of groundwork. That's probably why you're not getting so many questions, and so that was really helpful.
But if and when, yeah, January. If.
Was it Jan-? No, it wasn't.
It was January, yes.
Time flies.
Wow. Yeah, well, it really helps to have some of these terminologies explained to us going forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I apologize. When, if and when I come back, I will bring more diagrams and more reminders of TIF.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from the commission, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pollan.
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders. Commissioner Earl. Commissioner Wang. Chair, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. And I don't think there's anything for me to read on that one. Let's move, go ahead now, and move to the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan, First amended plan.
And actually, this is the Twin Peaks Mall.
Oh, Twin Peaks.
The Twin Peaks Mall, and this, this is not appearing. That is so strange. It is not appearing properly. So this is the Twin Peaks Mall area, urban renewal plan area. We are looking at a series of properties. I apologize, the image on the right is not appearing, but we are looking at two properties right at the corner of Nelson and Hoover. This is the redevelopment project. It is going to be, it is slated to be a 265-unit multifamily development with an integrated parking garage, and there are plans for a future phase for a second 230-unit building. Existing use is commercial. It is a vacant lot that at one point was a Walmart. Zoning is mixed-use regional center. Surrounding land uses are a mix of unincorporated Boulder County and mixed-use regional center. Like the other amendment, the properties exist within an area of change for the city. Growth would be desirable and beneficial to the community in this area per envisioned Longmont. It's a mix of residential, employment, retail, commercial, recreational, and other uses. And redevelopment of these properties would meet the needs of Longmont residents by providing additional housing. And it does incorporate a higher-density housing type in areas where transit are accessible or planned. So the application summary, this would be the Second Amendment. There was a prior amendment to add a TIF clock to the Twin, to a separate part of the Twin Peaks Mall area. This would be the creation of tax increment district number two. And again, we're looking at eradicating conditions of blight primarily through tax increment financing per Colorado Urban Renewal Law. And the inquiry for the commission this evening is to determine if this tax increment district follows envisioned Longmont's comprehensive plan. So the recommendation is to approve the Second Amendment to the Twin Peaks Mall area urban renewal plan to be in conformance with envisioned Longmont's multimodal and comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Can I get a clarification? You said it's at the corner of Hoover and Nelson, but it's really just off of the corner of Hoover and Nelson. It does include the strip mall.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
What about the existing units that are just, well, are to the east? That's, there's a haircut place, a Chinese restaurant, I think. Are those still going to be there, or do those, are those going to be removed?
Correct. They will stay.
They will stay, okay.
Correct.
So basically, going from their western boundary all the way to the, the stream, the, the concrete spillway?
Yes. It, it basically, you, it, we are not, there is no redevelopment of the existing structures.
Okay.
The, the building is going directly on top of the former Walmart. That is no longer there.
And then the second unit, if it gets built, would be built on top of the parking lot area?
Parking lot, correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just following up on that, if, if the development we're talking about is a portion of this TIF area, why is it drawn to include that larger area?
It's not. Gosh, I, I'm so sorry that the, 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 the TIF area includes the high, the property we are looking at right now, and the property to the east of it, where townhomes will be developed.
Okay. But, yeah. I'm just, I'm looking at.
The former, the, the TIF area, number one, is in a different location. That's, these properties are not in that boundary.
Understood. I think the question is, we have the former Walmart site on the western part of this TIF area, and that's what is, that has a development proposal for it.
Correct.
We're also including those other commercial spaces in this TIF area that are not changing at this time, and then we continue going to the east.
There are actually two, there are actually two squares. It includes the Walmart, and then it picks up where these townhomes are going to be. There's, there's a slated townhome development that is expected to go here as well.
That's not what I'm seeing in.
Yeah, I know. It's not appearing. I'm so sorry.
In the, in the urban renewal, in the amended plan, it's not in the plan, the attachment that we have.
It is not appearing. Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. It's the conversion, it's the conversion to PDF.
It's Jeremy's fault. I heard that. They're the record.
Right. But then you have this piece in the middle.
Right. Where's the map?
Right, I think she was saying they did. That's what I was trying to understand.
Yes.
Yeah, that one works.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Now it's appearing.
Yeah. And so, I mean, the question is really that middle part that we're saying is not changing. Why is it included in the TIF?
It's not. Jeremy, can I? It, that.
Because there is an Exhibit C that also, or I think it's either B or C, that shows it pretty clearly also included.
Yes, yes.
Page 27, Exhibit C.
Yes, yes. That is an error. It's only, it's only these two. Why is it not there? Jeremy, Jeremy, can you pull up the actual presentation?
Can we take a, while you guys go ahead and get that figured out, do you want to take a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break.
Time to stand. Chair, appreciate you.
Okay, and we are gonna go real quickly to Commissioner Saunders?
Oh, thank you, Chair Pollan. I'm, um, doing a point of privilege at this moment to add, um, the resolution number to my earlier approved motion. Well, my earlier motion that was approved, um, for the southeast Longmont Urban Renewal Plan. Um, apologies to everyone, I forgot to put in the PZR twenty twenty-five dash eight A. Needs to go with that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, let's go back now to the presentation and I believe we have clarification.
We have a high-tech solution for you, um, to demonstrate the, um, to rather fix the error in the amendment, in the, um, the attachment. So, the plan, the TIF area plan is the two squares on either side of the red X. So, that is what you, uh, would be voting on tonight and we would make that, you would make, you could make that motion and then provided that the, um, attachment be then updated and corrected prior to going to city council.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, the, that parcel to the right, is that the one we approved two years ago?
Uh, yes, Chair, um, I can't remember the prior name. It's now called Enclave at the Peaks, but, uh, for the townhomes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Are there any other comments, questions from the commission? Commissioner Earl?
Thank you for the, um, highly technical change to this. I, I just want to make sure I understand. So, so we are being asked to say this is compliant with the city's comprehensive plan. It then goes on to city council to be adopted, correct?
Correct.
So, i- if we make the motion here to approve this with the understanding that there's changes that have been described and talked about in detail, those all get done before it goes to city council. So, there's still a sign-off that it actually happens.
Correct.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we adopt PZR twenty twenty-five nine A, um, understanding that exhibits A and C are modified to show the excluded area both on the maps and the legal descriptions uh, within the amended, within the second amendment to the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan.
Does that go under A or would that be B as a condition? He's fine? Okay, we're good. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Commissioner Wang?
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any further comments, questions? Commissioner Lang?
So, where you drew that X, Jeremy, is that basically, I'm looking at Google Maps and it's, it's basically Hobby Lobby, China buffet, pos to groom, all that, and the parking adjacent to that is where that X went. Okay.
That is correct.
So that area is unaffected, it's to the east and the west of that.
That is correct.
What happens to that little, what is that? It's like a HVAC building just to the, like, the east of Hot Pot City. It's, it's a funky little, uh, I don't know, I'm looking on Google Maps, it's just this little, it's set back from Nelson a little bit, um, does that, is that included in the district or is that, or is it kind of a curved? Sorry, I know you guys aren't looking what I'm looking at, but.
Or will that be removed when they put in the enclave?
Yes, that's, that's right, Jerry. So that,
That's part of-
That might go, that might go bye-bye, the, the little. Uh, it's, it's actually, I think it's a, like, one of these plumbing or heating and cooling kind of places or something, but it's, yeah. Nineteen twenty-five Nelson. Thanks, Warren.
So to clarify, um, that will be redeveloped as part of the Enclave at the Peaks townhome development.
Okay. So it's two kind of rectangular, one's kind of a portrait, one's kind of a landscape on either side of the Hobby Lobby property for that district.
That's correct.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Do we have any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Lang?
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders?
Yes.
Commissioner Earl?
Yes.
Commissioner Wang? Chair, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for the presentation. Laura Moody?
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on. Next item is final call invited, public invited to be heard. This is a chance for the public to speak on any items. Seeing that there's nobody in the audience, I'll go ahead and close out public invited to be heard. Next is items from the commission. Commissioner Saunders?
Chair, um, this one's for Director Penland, please. I'm wondering, we were asking, like, does this seem like a lot, you know, as far as density or is this seem too little or is this, like, commonplace? What is your take on the packet this week? Was this a lot? Was this medium? I mean, it's hard to judge because we're getting done at nine, so don't take that into account, please. But as far as volume of documents for us to review, what is your best guess of small, medium, or large?
Uh, I would probably say average, um, and purposeful, uh, knowing that two of the items were fairly minor from a review perspective. Obviously, there was a lot of dialogue and there were several applications, um, included with the, the Urban Thomas item. Uh, again, I would say that's fairly typical, uh, but again, there was a decent amount just of overall review necessary for that first collection of items. Is that helpful?
It is. Would you say that's from your sort of standpoint as staff or from what you think that planning and zoning would need to review?
I think we typically look at it in terms of what volume the commission is able to review in that amount of time.
Oh, good, cause that's what I'm looking for, because we get it Thursday. Best case scenario, we're here Wednesday, but, you know, depending on everybody's life and what's in there, like, so, for an example, when I give my students homework, I kind of give them a gauge, like, this is gonna take you six hours, this is a bigger project, so it's gonna take twice as long as average. So I think that might help if that's possible to put into the packet for allotting time, maybe on the weekend. So if I see a packet, oh, this looks pretty simple, but then I get it and it's like nine hundred pages, that's more challenging for me to do a good job of it. I don't, you know. So if that is, if that's possible, that would be helpful. I don't know if anybody else has any comments on it, but I thought this was rather large, being an annexation, different concept plans, I had to do a lot of history and understanding and nuances, so I felt it was larger than a medium. Any other comments on that?
I will, I will, yeah, it was maybe a little bit on the larger side.
And it's great to get that perspective as well.
But you know what, I do, I do agree. It would be nice to have that perspective going in.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we can definitely evaluate a good methodology. I like your, your homework analogy in terms of, yeah, kind of an anticipated timeline.
And all pages are not the same. I mean,
Absolutely.
So, thank you. I, I will bring up something for a quick discussion. While we did approve the fact that it did meet the posting requirements, I think there is some questions by the commission as far as the posting requirements and whether they should be looked at, maybe updated, changed? Is that something maybe we, people would agree, is that something maybe we should look, uh, can we take a look at at a future meeting?
Again, based upon direction from the commission, we're happy to bring, again, more information, more, more, a- again, I comparisons for that discussion, um, all share that I've administered um, in multiple jurisdictions and of course it varies wildly in terms of what the requirements are. Um, we can definitely, again, give you kind of the history of where we're at, um, and then, yeah, we can get some input on what, yeah, your feedback is on the current code and how.
Yeah, I think it's more of a discussion item right now. Yeah. Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would kind of second that, that would be a good discussion to have. And I think the discussion is two parts. It's, does the code work? Does it need to be amended? And then what is staff's interpretation of the policy? So things like double-sided signs, um, tho- just those things that staff has full discretion over, I think would also be really helpful to understand, um, since obviously the code is much harder to adjust, change going forward. Yeah.
Commissioner Boone?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I didn't comment during the applicant's presentation relative to signage, but I'm going to do it now, just in general. Um, if I'm interested in a project and I see a yellow sign, or a pink sign, or a white sign, um, I'm going to stop and I'm, if I'm interested and I'm gonna go and see what that sign says, because recently, I was driving down Third Avenue at fifteen miles an hour and there was a sign posted and I couldn't read it. So, if I'm interested, I'm going to take the time to stop and, and look at it. And the fact that all of the neighbors were notified of this hearing. And there were signs posted, you know, there's a yellow sign, that tells you something's gonna happen. I don't need to be able to read it from one nineteen. I need to know that something's gonna happen and I need to go investigate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair. Um, to that point, my view of the signs um, are from an accessibility standpoint for everyone. Not everyone knows that a yellow sign means development. Not everyone knows that a white sign means what, whatever's happening. But we are, we all have that understanding. And maybe before we got here, we didn't have that understanding, but we know it now. I, I just think that citizens in general may not have that same understanding. And so, it's not, um, just about visibility and that there's a sign there, it's, it, it's accessibility for citizens, cause that's the whole idea. Is to let citizens know that this is happening. We know this is happening, we see the packet, we're also fairly engaged citizens. Not everyone is. Land development and zoning is not easy to understand. It's fairly complicated. So, any steps that we can make it easier for citizens to have that access, I'm all for.
Yeah, thank you. And, and my big thing, I mean, I'll just co- comment. I may not be able to read something, but what I would do, and, and if people are still listening out there, what you can do is, you can call the planning department and say, I saw a sign at one nineteen and one hundred nineteenth. What does that sign mean?
I don't know, they would know to call that. I don't know they would know that's the perfect to call.
Well, once again, that's why we want to have a discussion, because I think there, there's a limitation to, to how much, what you can actually put up to, for people to say, I mean, you're not gonna put up a billboard saying, we're gonna be bill here. So I think that's why we need a discussion to, to, what's, what's logical.
Then it could be better.
So, that's why I s- we suggested that. Perfect. Any other items from the commission? Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very quick, um, Director Penland, you're smiling, you think you, I think you already know what I'm gonna say here. Um, I hope when you give an update here and we talk calendar that we have, uh, a time set or we'll soon have a time set to talk about, uh, or continue the discussion we had about single-family ATAT or, I'm, single-family DTA-
No.
Attached in single-family zoning, residential single-family zoning. I, I'm sorry, the words don't make sense there, but I think you know what I'm asking about, the discussion we had previously.
Uh, I do, and I can clarify, I have an update.
Thank you. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I appreciate an update.
Very good. Any other items? If not, and seeing that we do not have Council Representative Rodriguez with us today, we'll move to, uh, the next item, which is Planning Director Grant Penland.
So I do have updates, um, probably good news, bad news on, on some fronts. Um, we actually have about nine or ten items, uh, that are generally land use related that are in the queue. Um, of, for all intents and purposes, ready to get scheduled within the next month, so, um, pretty much all agendas, um, in the upcoming months will probably be full. Um, and I can walk through kind of the, the general content real quick, but going back to the request of the planning commission, so I'll answer twofold. One, uh, as you just heard, we have lots of land use items that we, we need to cover. Um, secondarily, you may or may not know, but, uh, council has actually given us some priority work in the last few months. Um, dealing with, uh, again, th- their priority projects being sugar factory, sugar mill, steam area, um, and others, so a lot of staff's time has been taken up by that. Um, so the bad news is, I don't have a specific timeline, uh, in which we have that scheduled, uh, to come back to you, but, uh, of course, it, it's on our radar, uh, we're still actually slowly, uh, doing additional research. Uh, so, again, we, we have not forgot about it, but, uh, we are getting some additional, um, pressure from council to, to work on some other things currently, so. Um, I'll walk quickly through, um, kind of the, the pending items moving forward. Uh, I'm just gonna cover the type, um, just to give you an idea. Um, right now, just based upon timing, we don't have anything scheduled for the first meeting in September. Um, and a lot of that's just due to staff coordination with the applicant. We do have three items that are potential for September twenty-fourth, um, that would include one variance, one conditional use site plan, as well as a code amendment. Um, I know that sounds like a lot, and so our request would be, if at all possible, we'd, uh, like to, to start at six PM, I believe. Uh, Jane sent out kind of a precursor to that and let, uh, the commission know that, uh, that would be our ask. And so, that is September twenty-fourth, um, and then October fifteenth. We have, uh, one preliminary plat most likely scheduled. Um, I will say that it will have significant public interest, so we are keeping it. Yeah, I'm guessing some of you know which one, quit, quit looking, Jeremy. Uh, he, don't, don't tell him, he won't show up. Uh, it, yeah, uh, he'll feel like I did yesterday. An- anyway, we will limit that to one item that night. Um, we also may have the dialogue about starting that meeting early, uh, six PM as well, just with the anticipated, uh, public input on that. And then, uh, we do anticipate a second meeting in October. Um, we're trying to put two conditional use site plans on the same night, just from a topic perspective. Um, I, I think one of them is probably less robust than what, uh, commission has seen in the past for conditional use site plans, just because it is very, very heavily focused on the use, more so than the site plan. Um, and so that's why we're trying to double that one up. And then looking out into November, uh, right now, a- again, we only have one meeting in November, just based upon holidays. Um, there's an annexation proposed that, and again, we'd keep it to one item, of course, because it is an annexation. And then we're looking at December seventeenth, again, the only meeting in December. Um, one conditional use site plan and then a potential dialogue, uh, about a code amendment. That's still very tentative, it may get pushed into, uh, subsequent year, so. That's kind of the look ahead, uh, essentially for the remainder of the year. Um, like I said, we definitely like to start the September twenty-fourth meeting at six PM and then, uh, we, we'd again, at least like to, to get input as well on starting the, uh, excuse me, the, uh, October fifteenth early as well, just based upon anticipated, uh, public interest.
Thank you very much. And seeing no more comments, questions, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting-